Tammy, does that mean we're going to begin?
Oh wow. Wow.
I think I'll have to cover it.
I know.
All right. Welcome everyone, like you call this meeting of the Mexico Beach Planning and Zoning Board, July 14th to order. And just to remind, thank you all that have attended, the public and anybody that's on the line, a reminder that the P&amp;Z is an advisory, the ultimate decision does not lie with us. We provide counsel and then ultimately the city council makes the decision. Tammy, if you'll go ahead and do roll call.
Okay, Mr. Carrigan?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Elsie?
Here.
Ms. Logan?
Here.
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Here.
And Mr. Kreis is excused.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, and we have a lot, is a request to annex approximately 33.24 acres east parcel. And the agenda changed just a little bit, Tim and Mel, from what we were given earlier. So I'm gonna let you guys go ahead and start us off, if you will. Just an overview of-
Yes, sir. And what I would recommend, Mr. Chair, is the applicant representative for all three annexations, land use changes and zoning is here as well as his council. And I would suggest, before we get into the specifics of each one, maybe he could just give us a broad overview of what they're looking to do and then we can break it up and look at the individual pieces.
Okay, so we want to start that way by opening the public discussion?
With council or the applicant?
Oh, name and address on that?
Yes.
Brent Faison, 1311 Cincinnati Avenue, Panama City, Florida. Thank you all. I believe the full package, I've looked through it. In a nutshell, it's three different applications. One is on each side of the spy road as you go in. It's, they're each plus or minus 30 acres. Then up along the highway, there's a separate application for a total of 7.14 acres, I believe. The two on each sides of the spy road, I believe referred to as East and West, that will consist of a total of 45 single-family residential lots. And then the 7.14 acre piece, the commercial on the highway, that will consist of one home, two suites by Hilton. It'll be 96 rooms. And then the other portion of that is another 12,000 square feet of commercial building space that we will build there to, for rent.
And just to clarify, Mr. Faison, the road is being annexed at the end if the council so chooses to do that, but it is going to remain a private route?
Correct. Everything behind the gate is private roads. That'll be the association's upkeep maintenance. Obviously out front is a different situation on 98. But glad to answer any question or comments you may have.
Do you have any idea what you're gonna do with the other 12,000 square feet commercials?
If, we get calls weekly from different users, from financial services, from medical, from restaurants. If it were built, it would probably lease up, but I'm waiting to do the other residential first before I build it. The allotment is 12,000 square feet. I don't know if it'd be one 12,000 spin line, if we do maybe two 6,000s with a gathering spot in the middle, but it'll be a total of 12,000. I can't say what the users are, but they are calling, so that's the intent. Just to lease and we're not selling anything, we'll just lease it and hold it just like the hotel.
Will that be inside the gate or help me understand where that leaves?
No, the gate, once you go in the gate, right now you have phase 164 built out lots, you'll have 45 more. That'll be the only group, those lots are the ones that get to use beach access. The hotel, any of the commercial, they cannot come through the gate to use that beach. That'll just be for the single-family lot owners behind the existing gate.
Any other questions, the board, while we, Mr. Faison?
So, Mr. Chair, what you have, essentially, are three components of each of the parcels, the east parcel which does include the road, the west parcel, and then the commercial parcel. They are all being brought to you pursuant to an annexation agreement that was enacted last year in December by the council. And it outlines the method by which those parcels are coming in. It identifies maximum water and sewer capacity and identifies the type of land use that they're going to be applying for in the zoning. So what you're here on tonight to hear about are really the fleshing out of the things that were in that agreement and documents that would be required in order to do what that agreement was contemplated. First of all, the annexation. In order for the city council to start regulating the property, you would have, the city would have to annex the property in. And that applies to all three different parcels. All three are under 50 acres and therefore they are the small-scale conferency plan amendment to the future land use map. Once the three, assuming they are annexed in, then the next thing that would happen would be the assignment of a land use category from the city, because when they come in by annexation, they come in with the land use category of the county. And so in order for the city then to apply its rules and regulations, it then assigns a land use category to each of those three parcels. And then because Mexico Beach has its version of zoning, then you would also apply the zoning categories, which really are identical to the land use categories in this case. So, so each, while it looks like a lot of items on the agenda and while a couple of them will need to be handled separately because they're quasi-judicial, at the end of the day, they are just implementing what the council agreed to back in December of last year. So, the first annexation, which is a little more than 33 acres, picks up the east parcel including the roadway and then the west parcel comes in behind that if you choose to recommend that also. And then the coercion comes in behind that with the land use assignments of each one. When you get to the quasi-judicial part, then we'll need to swear in any witnesses that may want to talk about the zoning of each of those three parcels at that point in time. But you have a report, and by the way, I would ask that all of the documents that have been presented to you would be included in the record so that the record goes from planning and zoning to the city council. And if anyone were to challenge it, it would be clear that the record were all of these documents that were submitted. But one of the documents that is in your packet is the staff report from Alora, TPC, and it kind of goes into more detail of what it is that's going on, how the water and sewer broke down for the parcels and that sort of thing. She did have an addendum, she, Ms. Alora is on a trip in Alaska, is that correct, Mel? In Montana or somewhere?
Which your national park is, wherever that is.
Wherever that is. So she is unable to be here tonight, so while I thought Mel might be doing a stand-in, you have her report and if there's a lot of questions, I'm not, we'll try to answer them, but I'm not sure where she got all of her information. So, in any event, so you have that staff report, you have her note that the acreage changed a little bit because she didn't know that the road was included.
About two and a half acres.
And then you have the note from Mr. Moore indicating about the legal description of the east parcel, make sure we have the correct legal description in the verity document. So those documents are all in your packet. You also have the notice information in your packet. So it's before you all tonight, and if you want to go in order, first would be the annexation proposal and the associated proposed ordinance, which would be ordinance 854 for the east parcel, if you want to take both of those two and get comments from the public, and then good comments, and then have a vote and move on.
One, one, but thank you for walking us through that. For the board's role and responsibility, will it be, will any of these be able to be lumped together, these 15 different motions?
I'm lumping ordinances and the topic itself. I would suggest those could be handled together because they're really part and parcel. The ordinance is simply implementing what a decision would be from you or the council. So when it comes, if you want to look at number wise, under the ordinances, ordinance 854 would match up with item number three on your agenda. I took them in order where each ordinance is, I had three annexation ordinances, 854, 855 and 856. Then you had, started east-west and commercial. Then you had east-west and commercial land use assignments, and you had east-west and commercial zoning. So, item three on the agenda and ordinance 854 are really addressing the same thing.
Okay, so it's your suggestion that we start with 854 and we would open the public discussion on that?
Well, and item three, which is the potential annexation of the east parcel. Yes, sir.
So then the developer gave us an overview, thank you, and I want to make sure that we include the public. Would anyone from the public like to come up and have anything you'd like to say or any questions on this? If there's none from the public, then we'll close the public discussion and open up the board discussion.
And this is the east?
This is the east parcel, yes, ma'am.
I don't have any questions on this per se. My questions are more on Alora's report, which only Alora could answer, so I'll just not ask those at all.
You should have an opportunity to ask those when it comes before the council, but there'll be two public hearings in front of the city council, the first one being the next meeting and then the first meeting in August. And certainly, I'm sure the council would love to hear your questions and the response from Alora on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that good, Lisa?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so what would you be looking?
I would look for a recommendation to the city council either to approve or disapprove the annexation of the east parcel and ordinance number 854.
I make a motion to approve the annexation of the east parcel and ordinance 854.
To recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval by Lee. Tammy, if you're recording that?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a second by Larry, if you wanted. Any additional discussion? If not, you can go ahead and do a roll call.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Okay, the next category would be item number four on the agenda, which is the request to assign a Mexico Beach tourist mixed-use land use category to that same parcel, the east parcel again, and that goes with ordinance number 857. That is in your package.
All right, we'll follow the same process and open it up for public discussion. Anyone from the public like to have anything to add on this topic? Hearing none, we'll close the public discussion and open it up to the board.
Nothing on this side?
Okay.
So I would suggest you solicit the same type of motion to either recommend approval or disapproval.
Is there a corresponding ordinance?
Yes, 857.
I move that we recommend approval to the council request amendment to future land use map for that parcel and ordinance 857.
Thank you, Lee. We've got a motion?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second from Larry for approval. Tammy, if you want to call for a vote?
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda, Mr. Chair, is item number five, which is a quasi-judicial proceeding to assign a zoning category. And so anyone who, anyone from the public who speaks on this item would have to be sworn in.
Are you ready for that now?
Yes, sir. And the associated ordinance is 860. Again, we're talking about just the east parcel.
All right, we'll open the public discussion. Would anyone from the public? Nope. So we'll close the public discussion, open it up to the board. Anyone from the board?
And just to make sure the record's clear, anyone on the board having a discussion with the applicant prior to this meeting after the application was submitted would have to disclose what the conversation was. Anybody had a conversation with the applicant? Have you talked to this guy? Okay, so no disclosure, okay. So that being said, then the board can have a discussion about the assignment of a zoning category and a proposed ordinance 860.
Is there any board discussion on assignment of zoning category in ordinance 860? No? All right, then are we looking for a motion on the assigning of zoning category?
Yes, sir. This is on the east parcel again.
On the east parcel, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, we recommend approval, recommend amendment of the zoning map for this east parcel and ordinance 860.
Okay, we have a motion from Lee?
Uh-huh. Second. I'll second it.
Okay. We have a second?
You can just second it now.
We have a second from Larry. So Tammy, if you'd like to call for a vote?
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
All right, so the next item is now moving to the west parcel, and this is the legislative decision, again, for you and the city council. So this is the west parcel, which is running down the west right away of the road. Same procedure would apply. Ordinance number 855 would apply to the annexation, which is the first item to be discussed, item number six.
All right, we're gonna open it to the public each time and make sure that we offer that opportunity. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this? Now we'll close the public discussion and open the board discussion.
Mr. Sloan, clarify for me if you would. This is for annexation. What is the difference between the annexation here and what the council voted on in December?
Well, the council's agreement in December was an agreement to annex. It was not the annexation. It was saying that the applicant would come in prior to August 31st and apply for annexation, apply for the land use and zoning. And that's, it's implementing what was contemplated to be done in that agreement.
Okay. The framework was already agreed on, this is just the next of all.
Essentially, the basic framework was agreed to last year by the council, and this, again, is just kind of putting the meat on the bones of how you get to do what was contemplated in that agreement.
Any other questions, comments? So are you looking for a motion for annexation of the west parcel?
Yes, sir, and ordinance number 855.
We'll move. All right, we have a motion from Larry? Second. Second from Lee. All right, thank you both, and Tammy, you can call for a vote.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is item number seven on the agenda, which again relates to the west parcel, which is again the legislative decision to assign a Mexico Beach tourist mixed-use land use category to the west parcel, and that's what's been applied for. And so the associated order, or excuse me, the associated ordinance that goes with that is 858.
All right, let's open it up to the public discussion. Anyone from the public? All right, there being none, we'll close the public discussion, open it up to the board. No? Lisa, no? Okay, so I think we're looking for a motion then to recommend approval, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Item number seven, or excuse me, yes, item number seven and ordinance number 858.
Make the motion, item number seven and ordinance number 858.
And recommending approval?
Recommending approval.
Okay, all right, we have, we have a motion for Mr. Van Arsdale?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Larry. Tammy, if you'll call for a vote?
Okay, Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
Next item, Mr. Chair, is item number eight, which just is to assign a zoning category for that same west parcel, which was mixed-use zoning category, and ordinance number 861 would apply to that item number eight.
And this is quasi-judicial?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's open it up to the public, where you need to be sworn in if you want to talk about this one. Does anyone from the public want to make a comment? All right, none from the public?
Again, we'd need to disclose, same, I'm assuming the answer's the same as nobody had any discussions with the developer.
Okay, then we'll open it up for board discussion. Any questions on this one? Are there any? So would someone like, someone like to make a motion to assign a zoning category for this east zoning change, ordinance 860?
61, 61.
61?
Actually, actually, it looked like it says 62.
Now it's 61, I jumped back to the one.
Oh, over here. Oh, she's 60.
61 is what Bobby would say. You gotta go back on.
Oh, bless you.
Okay.
At my moment of excitement?
There you go. Well, now that you understand, would you like to make a motion?
I move, so moved.
You recommend it?
Who'd you recommend?
Yes, sir.
Assigning a zoning category, correct?
Correct.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion from Larry?
Second.
We have a second from Lee. Tammy, if you'll call for a vote?
Okay, Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
All right, the next item, we're back to legislative items, it's item number nine, which relates to the commercial piece, the 7.14 acres up front. That owner is actually Zia, and Mr. Faison also represents them along with his council. So what you would have is a request to annex that property into Mexico Beach and the associated ordinance, which is 856 for the annexation.
Okay, open this up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this? No? Nothing from the public, we will open it up to the board. Any discussion or questions from the board? Okay, if there's, if there's none, then we would be looking for a motion for a request for annexation.
Make a motion, we recommend the council annex those approximately 7.14 acres west parcel and ordinance 856, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir. Okay, we have, we have a motion from Lee?
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Arsdale. Tammy, if you want to call for a vote?
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
All right, the next item is item 10, Mr. Chair, and that is to assign a land use category of tourist mixed-use again to the commercial parcel up front.
All right, I will open it for public discussion. Anyone from the public? We're almost at the end. No, no interest, okay, we'll close that and we'll open the board discussion. Any questions or comments from the board on this land use change for this parcel?
Is this the ordinance 859?
That's correct.
Nothing from the board, so we would be looking for a motion to recommend approval of this land use change and ordinance 859?
Make a motion to approve the land use change in ordinance 859.
We have a motion to direct to its approval for land use change in motion 859.
Second.
There's a second from Lee. Tammy, if you want to call for a vote?
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
The last of these items is item number 11, and it's for the assignment of zoning category, again, this is quasi-judicial, so anyone would have to be sworn in the council. The setting of the board will have to make a disclosure if anyone had talked to the applicant.
All right, we'll open the public discussion. Anyone from the public like to speak on this? Nothing from the public, we'll close the public discussion, open it up to the board. Any questions?
No disclosure required.
No disclosure, anyone? Nothing to discuss.
And the associated ordinance on this is 862, Mr. Chair.
So we would be looking for a motion to assign a zoning category and associated ordinance 862.
I recommend approval to the council to amend zoning map for that parcel and ordinance 862.
Send a motion by Lee. Tammy, we have a second by Mr. Van Arsdale, if you'll call for a vote?
Mr. Van Arsdale?
Yes.
Ms. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. Elsie?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes.
And that's it relative to the applications for- And that's it relative to the applications for annexation, assignment of land use and assignment of zoning category from Farmdale and ZF. So that's all you have from them on the agenda.
Okay.
So this concludes everything that you need from us as well, right, Mel?
That is correct.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, we'll accept that, and we're adjourned, thank you.